Mr. Chairman, I'd like to comment that I was not aware that there was a lawsuit pending in this issue of rejoining the bad lawsuit as the co-defendant. And so therefore, I will not be able to attend this meeting or make any commentary. Other than to say that the underlying assumptions here are based on false analysis and the analysis is faulty on its face. So with that, I'm sorry, I'll have to excuse myself.
For the record, thank you.
And Tom Ryan?
Tom Ryan, and Jim?
Jim?
Are you here, Jim?
Yes, I am, thank you.
Could you just, okay, we have you as registered.
Jim Markier.
Thank you, very good. Join me in the presentations. Presentations to the flag of the United States. And to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and just for all. Today, in this special session, and I return to Mickey Anna, who has brought the case to the court.
Thank you. As everybody had a chance to read the little essay that I sent you, I'll just summarize briefly, and then they will begin to start the discussion. I ran across this article three days ago, and it said that they had done studies in all 50 states and found this statistical phenomenon, an anomaly, that they couldn't explain, and their question was, could it be election fraud? I then used their methods and ran some data from Pima County for the Republican presidential primary, as well as for other primary races in 2012, as well as general election races in 2010, and I found the phenomenon in many, in most of the races that I looked at. There were a few races where I did not see this phenomenon, and the phenomenon appears that, that there is a statistical correlation between the size of a precinct and who is getting what percentage of the vote. In the case of the presidential preference primary, it appeared that Romney was getting a larger percentage of the vote in large precincts than he got in small precincts. In the general elections, it appeared that Republican candidates were getting a larger percentage of the vote in large precincts than they were getting in small precincts. And the people in California said in their paper that they had attempted, in various states, to correlate this phenomenon with various demographic data, such as income levels, urban versus rural precincts, et cetera, and they had not found any correlation with those demographic features, leaving them to wonder what it is that's driving this particular statistical anomaly. I'm still trying to figure out what is driving this statistical anomaly. I don't know the answer to that, and that's what scares me. I have said many times over the last five or six years in this group, that, that I think that to protect ourselves against fraud, that we should be doing a proper hand count audit of early ballots. And my definition of a proper hand count audit would be to sort the early ballots by precinct, and then to do the hand count audit on the same precincts that we do the precinct hand count audit on. And the process would be, in my estimation, to sort the ballots after they're scanned, but before the hand count audit begins. On election night, we produce a report of the election. It's not the final report, but it is a report that includes the early ballots scanned to that point, and it includes essentially all of the precincts. And if we were to take that report as our reference, and then take all the ballots that went into that report, and sort those by precinct, all the early ballots, the precinct ballots are already sorted by precinct. If we sorted the early ballots that went into that report by precinct, then on the day that we do the hand count audit, we could select the precincts at random, and count early ballots by precinct, instead of doing them by batch. That would give us confirmation of the integrity of our election. And the way we're doing it now, where we do a hand count by batch, does not confirm the integrity of the election. And I have argued for several years that that does not do the job, and this would do the job. And again, I don't know where this phenomenon is coming from. It is conceivable that there is some national level fraud going on. I think that you all are familiar with the Stuxnet virus that was put into Iranian computers. My understanding is that that virus was inserted into those computers via a circuit board that was put into the printers. And then the virus got into the computer, and took over, and caused the, the application software in those computers to malfunction. Similarly, you know, that kind of an attack, even though our computers are not hooked up to the internet, it is possible for a virus to get into our computers through some such thing. We just don't know. And my problem is that we're working with a black box, and because it's a black box, we don't know what's going on inside the computer, and the only way to confirm the integrity of the election is to do a proper hand count audit.
Let me break in for a minute then, and let the record chair, please, that F. Ann Rodriguez and Chris Rhodes can join us, thank you. And I'd like to take a minute just to sort of set up rather scene here, and ask both Dr. Ryan and Dr. Camoth to comment a little bit on the technical circumstances in which the machine in Pima County operates, just so that we can have that, even though many of us are very familiar with it, I'd like to have it as a matter of point of discussion this morning, I want to give my perspective on that, please.
First of all, just let me say that this phenomenon is truly odd, anomalous. And from, from the results that I've seen that have to do with Romney, I would say it is disconcerting, to say the least. And, and the reason that I, that I feel strongly that that, that is worrisome is that it was done in Republican primaries, where the demographics are not really as complicated as a partisan election. So that's very worrisome. Also, if this kind of behavior was resulted, was the result of fraud induced by software in our computers, then the audits that we do now would not detect it. Neither the precinct hand count, nor the batch mode counts, neither one would detect this fraud. So if indeed we want to have some system that detects this fraud, we have to do something else beyond what we're doing now. And one solution that Mickey has provided, which is sorting, sorting the ballots by precinct, and, and doing hand counts. There are a couple of things that are, that are a little odd about this, and that is that what we're looking at is a presidential preference primary, the Republican primary, seems to give Romney such an advantage, was held earlier this year, and the software in our system, from my understanding, has not been updated since, you know, the day it was initially loaded. Since it was initially loaded. So the question is, how would the perpetrator of such a fraud know that Romney was even going to be a part of that election at the time? That is very disconcerting. How would anyone know? So if, if the fraud was being perpetrated in Romney's favor, there has to be some other complicated trigger to get information from the outside into the inside.
What was the date that the software was loaded?
Approximately June of 2006.
But there's, that's the last update, as far as you know?
I believe so. I think they had the latest update on there, when, now that was the one update that Humboldt County did not have, but it's my understanding, and I'm not aware of any updates applied sequential, subsequent to that date.
Do you know the code or the name of that update?
Well, the, the version number is 18.24. That's the current version we're running.
So, so that, so that's a bit of a concern for me, as far as Pima County is concerned, because I have no information regarding the other, other places, the other states where this phenomenon has been, has been documented. So that's where I'm sitting right now.
Jim Mark here.
Go ahead, Jim.
Well, I just wanted to say that one possible way that you could get software into the system, if someone corrupt was working in the election department, is if you pop the case off of the server while it's turned off, you could run a data cable into the back of the hard disk from another computer, and put whatever programming you want into it, and pull whatever data you wanted out of it. It would be child's play. And if, this kind of a process would not leave behind any trace in the operating system that's on that hard disk inside that computer. If that's not clear, let me, let me try that again. When you turn the server on, the central tag monitor, you're running off of that operating system, and the Windows event log, for example, will track at least some things, there'll be other forensic traces left. But if you use another computer to read to or write from, or, I'm sorry, write to or read from that hard disk, then all, any, any possible audit features disappear at that point. And I remain concerned about that kind, that, that class of problem. Anyway, that's one way you could do it.
All right. Before you go, John, could you announce yourself, please?
Yes, Sheriff Man. I'm Zimma.
I'm sorry, and you're?
I'm a plaintiff in the suit, and I'm associated with AccuPark Tucson.
Okay, and may I ask you to join the public seating?
Sure.
Thank you very much. John, go ahead.
Jim, you know, I, I don't disagree with your, your theory there, that the issue in, in this case is that we have, since, actually, 2007, we have had tamper evidence seals on the CPU cases. Those are logged, and then we don't, we also took the ability from, away from the, the elections staff to be able to do systems-type administration. So that, that was one of my concerns also, is that you could get into the case at an inappropriate time and, and do something. So we track those logs, and when any change is made, number one, it takes two IT people, and, and we do that under observation. We recently had to change out a CD-ROM. We did it with the party observers in place, and we checked the seals to make sure that they are the same seals, and that they have not been tampered with. So our approach has been to try to physically secure these things and identify any type of activity of that, of that sort.
I'd like to-
Yeah, just a minute, Jim. Barbara Tillman is going to, I was going to ask you if you'd want to confirm that observation.
Yes. This is an advisory committee, thinks it's a very long time to do anything, but it took us five months to get our bylaws finished, for example. It took us probably four months to get a simple letter approved to the Board of, to the Secretary of State, just asking a simple request. So I'd like to know, I'd like to limit this discussion to any items that this committee has the ability to influence between now and election day.
It's a good point. I mean, if, if indeed this issue is warranted further consideration, it would seem that timing and any recommendations that this commission makes to the Board of Supervisors would take, as Barbara suggests, substantial time to move forward. We're not, I don't think, it's not realistic to think that we're in a position to make any, what you'd call, emergency changes.
And in addition, in addition, I think these issues are worth discussing at a future meeting. We discussed sorting at length at previous meetings, and I want to continue that discussion, but I don't think this meeting is that close to that, unless, unless it can be done between now and election day.
Yeah, well, I still think airing it today is of some value, since the issues have been brought forward, and this is a sounding board for airing such issues. But this is not an attempt, in my opinion, to make any wholesale changes with roughly less than two weeks remaining.
In particular, the idea of sorting the ballots after they've been counted, between that and the Saturday for the hand count, I'd like to know how you propose to do that. Will you rent a sorter? Will you hire a lot of extra people? How will you actually accomplish that?
I was told that Brad was going to provide us with some information on how that could be done, but he's not here, so I will offer my ideas.
Jim Mark here. I want to say that F. Ann Rodriguez has a sorting device that's exactly the site we'd need. F. Ann would be owns it.
Would it sort the ballots by precinct?
We do not have any sorting devices, all of our sorting would have to be hand done.
So let me offer some ideas here. One is, I'm guessing that RunBack has a sorter. I don't know that for sure. I'm guessing that there are commercial enterprises in Tucson that have sorters that could be applied to the task. But I believe that it is practical, simply to put together a team of a dozen people and sort the ballots by hand. I think that it would take a couple of days to do that, but it could be done between election day and the day that the hand count audit starts. So it could be done mechanically, it could be done by people, either way.
I think you're optimistic about how many people it would take and how long, especially since both the recorder and the election staff are still busy doing election things, and the hand count has to occur by Saturday.
I'm not saying that the people doing all of the other stuff would be the same people that could do the sorting.
I'm just asking where you'd get them.
I would get them from volunteers.
Right.
I would get them from the same cadre of people who participate in the hand count audit.
All 64. I don't think it's practical.
Arnie?
Yeah, I just wanted to raise a couple of points. One is that I agree that the apparent inconsistency between precinct and higher-level results is, is interesting, and it may be considered to be more than an anomaly, but in the, in the literature I'm voting, there are a lot of examples of level of analysis effects that give you different results or inconsistent results. So on the face of it, there's no evidence of any wrongdoing or any intention at work. It could just be a, a property, like many other properties, that we discover, once we look at it, and we try to understand it. So I don't see any evidence of anything malicious going on, although I have an active imagination. And in that regard, I was wondering if it's possible, if people really want to scrutinize what's going on, to do in an intentional way what Jim was talking about, is to get another machine and hook it up to the server, and do some parallel analysis of the data that's coming in and being processed, to see if this pattern is there. And, you know, then, I don't know if, if that would at least confirm that it's there. I'm not sure what you'd do about it, because it may just be a, a normal property. And I, I think that, that, that going beyond that to do special hand counts, I, I agree with the idea that if somebody had got inside the machine, that you could do all the hand counts you want. And, you know, in this, this suit that I saw briefly this morning, it says that the court should order hand count, sufficient hand counts. Doesn't say sufficient for what? I mean, that, that boggles the mind. So I think if you want to do something to better understand the process, there are potentially other ways of doing it that might be feasible to within two weeks, which wouldn't burden people already burdened this time of year, and might enable us to learn something.
Just to extend that a little bit, I think we need to be a little cautious about what we see with partisan elections as opposed to single-party elections. Like, most of the plots that we've done have been on partisan elections, and they show, they definitely show this, this trend. And I did the, I did the Secretary of State's race in three counties. All of them show the same, same behavior, both Pima, Maricopa, and Penalt. So when you're dealing with partisan elections, and, so I'm, I'm just thinking in terms of collecting data right after the upcoming election, because you can do it in the day. The question is, is how to interpret that, those results. And, and as Arnie says, there's, there could be some characteristic of, of the way people are distributed, the demographics, that causes this kind of thing in partisan elections. And I can think of one that is related to turnout. I think most people would say, or at least I'm aware of the fact, that in some areas, there are much lower turnout. You take, you take CD, the former CD7 has generally lower turnout, and it is more democratic than other areas of the, of the county, like Green Valley, which are more Republican, and have high turnouts, in the 95 percent some, some of those places. I think these are things that actually can be analyzed. I think the same authors that did this paper have done other studies that, that look at turnout as a, as a, or look, look at voting results as a function of turnout, and they have some very interesting statistics there. And I think we need to do that kind of level of analysis before we come to any conclusions about what's happening in partisan elections. In the primary, Republican primary, these, these factors don't come into play, and I think, at least I can't think of factors that would cause this, this effect. So since we don't really know the magnitude of, of effects like turnout, relative turnout, party turnout, and, and we don't know the relative effects of a registration, although we can partially correct for them, we don't know the magnitude of these effects yet. And we don't know whether what we're seeing in partisan elections is statistically significant, even though there's these curves that go in funny directions, we don't know whether it's statistically significant. Okay? I think it is statistically significant in some of the other states where we've, in the presidential primary. Those appear to be statistically significant. So I just wanted to add that to Arnie's comments.
I'd like to return to the question of sorting for this election. John, do you think it's practical to find enough people who can be trained quickly to sort 200, whatever, 50,000 ballots in a couple of days?
Well, I, I think that's very difficult. I think there are two issues. Let me answer that one first, in just sorting, in manual sorting that many ballots is, I think is, is very difficult. But the, the people that, when they come in and do the hand count audit, there's part of a training process there, and there's some redo that has to be done, because some of those people don't have the attention level that is required. So the, your point about the, the staff that normally handles ballots is important. Another point is, those ballots are, it's supposed to be in the custody of the election officials, and there's a space issue. At, at this point in time, that building, while it's a big building, is full of a lot of stuff, custody, moving, moving ballots, off-site, and those kind of things is another issue. A third issue is the fact that we still are required by law to analyze 1 percent of these batches, of these ballots that come through. And that you, if we create these and pull these off and set them aside, and they're sealed and everything like that, then how do you, if you're going to sort by precinct, you destroy the integrity of that audit batch. So that's, that's another, you know, we, we are in violation of, in my opinion, I'm not a judge or a lawyer, but I think we violate the, the actual specifics of what the law says there. Going back to the very first question, training that number of people and actually doing it accurately and getting it sorted, I, I think is a fairly ominous task. It's certainly not, not, you know, impossible, it's, but the logistics of where, and the timing to get it done in a, in a certain period of time is important. The other thing is, is when are we going to do this? If we want to do it before the hand count audit, I think the, the point that I just made about if we destroy the integrity of the audit batches, I think that becomes problematic. If we want to do it after the hand count audit, or at some other point in time, when, you know, when there, this, this process is not so tightly bound to deadlines and reporting and, and that sort of thing, that's a different issue. Where you've got some more time, where you have the, the house back in order, rooms can be set up to do this, but when you're, when you're in midair, and, you know, we've already, there's some confusion going on here. The, the one process, the way other counties sort this is they sort the ballots when they come in. The sorter that Mickey's referring to is a sorter of envelopes, and they're sorted. We've already got well over 110,000 ballots processed and opened. So, so at that point in time, we, we can't do envelopes. So, so we're in midstream on this thing.
And if we counted after the hand count audit, would we be violating any rules by taking the ballots out of the sealed containers and using them again?
Well, the, the ballots are in the custody of the, of the election official until the point of, of the canvas. At the canvas, then, then the law states that they shall be turned over timely to the treasurer for sequestration, and, and they can't be opened without court orders. So there's, there's the short period of time after the audit, before the canvas, that they, they potentially could be, you know, handled, but the next thing that we have to think about is if we have a challenge. And if there's a challenge made at the canvas, or if there's a challenge made, you know, during, even at the state canvas, because everything is open to challenge, if we've got a challenge, let's say one of those legislative districts that crosses county lines. Pima County's got theirs all in place, but then when the, there's a challenge in Penalt County, or one of, or Coconino County, and it's one district that goes all over the state. If those challenges come up at the state level, we really can't, don't have a canvas date until the state canvases. So those all involve maintaining integrity. We've, and this, this is, you know, we're trying to learn from history here, but every time we've touched any ballot subsequent to the counting process, then we're accused of maybe tampering with them and doing something else wrong. So I think that's, you know, that from an operational standpoint is a concern of mine, but it certainly doesn't prevent doing it.
I'd be very much in favor of looking into this for future elections, but I just don't see doing it at this particular time for this election. It just doesn't seem practical to me.
I have heard that argument for six years. Hey, Jim? Jim Mark? Can you put your phone on mute until you want to talk? We're getting background noise. Mickey, would the use of clear ballot or some similar process resolve this issue in your mind?
Yes, I think so.
We have, this commission has attempted, in a formal way, through the Board of Supervisors and to the Secretary of State, to, to pursue that agenda. and to the Secretary of State, to pursue that agenda, and the legislature has allowed for a test. Now, that seems to have dropped off the front burner because of the activities associated with the general election. If Barbara's concerned about timing, it's correct, and I think it is in terms of being realistic. Should we be putting our energies into re-establishing the opportunity to have a test from either clear ballot or some other similar technology? You may have seen, Tom and I have seen, there was a CBS affiliate in Florida that did a six-minute piece on the results of their study in seven counties in Florida. I think there's another three in the state of New York. And the results seemed quite promising. So, in terms of immediate strategy versus a midterm, a long-term strategy, those are all for us to consider.
Could we, in that regard, get Larry to, if that data is available from Florida, analyze it to see if there are any similar effects in that data?
It's a simple analysis, if you do.
Yeah. And some of the, one of the ones at issue was in Florida, as I recall, one of the two of the ones that he's working with.
That would be interesting to, yeah.
But, you know, I think that that, you know, I want to be clear that we're not against doing this, that, you know, we, the county, are not against doing this. It's just a logistical issue at this point in time. I think, you know, I truly feel that the scanning does, also does that, but I have a, again, a detailed question, is your current concerns are about early votes versus precinct ballots. And the imaging process, I don't know that there's a way to, there probably is, but there, I'm not sure there's a way to identify an early ballot versus another ballot. Do we care?
In the analysis that these guys in California did, they did not differentiate between early and precinct ballots. If fraud were taking place inside the central computer, it theoretically could involve both early and precinct ballots. My feeling is that because we do a 4 percent hand count audit of the precinct ballots, and we don't find fraud, that therefore I'm inclined to believe that if fraud is taking place, it is not involving the precinct ballots. Therefore, it would have to be in the early ballots if there is fraud. And I don't know that there's fraud, but I believe that it is possible. My understanding of computers tells me that you should not be trusting the answer that comes out of that computer without verifying it. And if you absolutely believe that there is no chance that fraud is taking place inside the computer, then we've got all the time in the world to study it. If you believe that there may be fraud taking place inside that computer, you have until five days after the election to identify it, because that's when a challenge has to take place. And our audit takes place within five days of the election, but nothing much else happens, and how would you know? If there was fraud in the computer, you wouldn't know without doing this hand count audit of the early ballots.
I don't think anybody's saying that we have 100 percent confidence that the system is perfect.
I think you must have, because you're opposing the proposal, and you've been opposing the proposal for six years. This is not a last-minute issue.
I've been on the committee for six years, Dan. I've only been on the committee for a year.
This is not a last-minute issue. We've been talking about this for a long time, and, and the county has opposed changing its procedures for a long time. And I'm bringing it up now because of this new data, but I've always been concerned about this black box that counts our votes, and the fact that we're not verifying that that black box is operating properly. And that's my concern, is that the black box is a black box, and we're not verifying the result. And I think we should verify the result, because I believe there is a distinct possibility of fraud taking place inside the computer.
I too have been arguing for a better audit ever since we started talking about audits. And the one we're doing now is not adequate. As I said before, it wouldn't catch this kind of fraud. I would argue for sorting the precincts, sorting the ballots by precinct, irrespective of what has happened in the last few days, okay? I would vote for that, no matter what, okay? But, the fact that we're seeing this result with Romney and other states, which is truly anomalous, implies to me that somebody has figured out how to do something weird with the computer system, okay? And that is, that concerns me more than anything. Somebody has figured out how to get into a computer, into some of the computer systems, because I can't imagine this happening in any other way.
Can I comment on, the most egregious example in that analysis was the Iowa process. The computers don't count Iowa. That's a manual process. That's not part of the official, I asked somebody to research it, and the feedback I got was that it's their manual ballots turned in, and the party, this was a partisan party process, that tabulated those and brought them and recorded them back to the central thing. I'm not trying to discredit anything else, but all I'm saying is that that one clearly got my attention also.
It's a caucus system.
Yes.
Yes, it's a very different system.
Right. And the others are, you know, you can see some normal, you know, standard deviation of error and that sort of thing that might be statistically explained. The one in Iowa that just went right off the charts is...
I remember reading, I read an article about the Iowa caucuses, where a guy who had attended a caucus in Iowa, when, when the total from his caucus was reported, he pointed out that it was wrong, because his caucus had voted for, I don't remember who, and the report came out that Romney had won his caucus, when he knew good and well Romney had not won his caucus. Now, the fact that that took place in a hand-counted system does not mean there is not fraud in a computer.
I agree with that, but we have a very unusual Republican election this year, because the party was so split for such a long time, that I think, you know, there are a lot of things that are plausible that could explain why this sorts of things happen, regardless of how the votes are actually counted.
There are lots of ways of committing fraud in elections. One is to develop fraudulent voter registration. One is to intercept people's ballots in the mail and vote them. And I understand there's going to be an article in the newspaper tomorrow about a couple whose ballots apparently got stolen somewhere along the way before they got them, and they were voted by people unknown.
But the system caught them. The system caught that.
Well, the system caught one of the two and didn't catch the other one. So, we were lucky that the system did catch one of those two. We don't know how many other ballots might have been involved in that kind of fraud, but it would be theoretically possible for somebody to detect voters that had moved away and had not voted in the last election, and intercept their ballots and vote them. I mean, there's lots of ways that you could commit fraud in an election. Some of them are more easily detected than others. We have a pretty good system on our mail-in ballots for trying to detect when somebody's doing something illegal. And we have detected people doing things illegally, and, and so that, that works fairly well. This kind of fraud, this particular issue of somebody having software in the computer that is altering the outcome of the election, as Tom said, by our current methods, is not detectable. And I have been arguing for six years that it's not detectable, and that therefore we should be sorting ballots by precinct, doing the early ballot audit by precinct. I'm not talking about doing an early ballot audit on top of the audit that you were talking about. I'm talking about doing it as a replacement for that audit. Yes, we could do it after the hand count audit is done. We could do it as an add-on. But that would mean that it would be done a week or two after the election, and as John said, if there's some problem with a contest, then that's going to tie up the ballots and interfere with our being able to do anything along these lines. I asked for this emergency meeting because this new statistical data scares me. I've been scared for six years, but this new data scares me even more, and I thought that we should discuss it. And I understand that you all are opposed to doing this. I don't understand why you're opposed.
Nobody said they're opposed to doing anything. We're just talking about it.
My, my feeling is that the integrity of our election can be confirmed through a proper hand count audit of the early ballots. And my goal is to confirm the integrity of the election in Pima County. And I believe that not doing this leaves us not able to confirm the integrity of the election, and that scares voters.
I don't think anybody's opposing you. It's just a matter of timing here.
I also think that you can't confirm anything, you can only refute it. And all the auditing procedures in different ways try to come up with inconsistencies between what people think happened and what seems to actually have happened in a rigorous analysis. So, you mean, you're never going to get totally comfortable with any system, whether it's an election system or any other system. You want to minimize the amount of error, so you have confidence it doesn't change the results. I think that's about the best you can hope for.
Well, I think the clear ballot approach is an exception to that. If done properly, I think it is almost, I'll say almost, foolproof.
Although you can imagine getting inside of that, too, right?
Yeah, that's a computer program also.
It is also a computer program, and if we went to a clear ballot solution, I would want to check some ballots by hand to compare them with what clear ballot was doing, to make sure that clear ballot was not, was not altered.
And this committee has been on record, month after month, of supporting the Secretary of State going ahead with the test, all that sort of thing. You can't say we're opposing it, but it just takes time. And I learned that when I first got on this committee. It takes time to do even the most mundane things. And I'm concerned that this election will happen and we get results as best we can. And that this is definitely something that we need to do in the future. I'm not opposed to it whatsoever, but I'm just concerned that practically speaking, with 10 days left, it's going to be virtually impossible to do what you want to do.
Let's just suppose, for the sake of argument, that, that on the day after the election, we have a surprising result. Let's suppose that the polls on the day before the election were predicting that Obama was going to win, and the day after the election, we discover that Romney won, and that the difference between the polls and the official result was, say, 5 percent.
I don't, I don't think that's a problem. I mean, because those polls, the polls aren't a very reliable guide. The error of their report is normalized error, so you could have a bigger deviation than you expect. It could still be not out of...
So, you would simply shrug your shoulders and say, oh, well, the polls were wrong?
No, I wouldn't, I would be unhappy for a variety of reasons, but, and even exit polls that have been studied in other elections to search for discrepancies in states that are battleground states, there are a lot of questions. I've done exit polls. I mean, it's, it's a very rough art, and, so I don't think you can find the Holy Grail.
We haven't discussed the role of the logic and accuracy tests. Do you discount those two?
The logic and accuracy tests are intended to determine if the computer was programmed correctly and if it's counting correctly. They do not tell you whether or not some virus in the computer was altering the count on election day.
Yeah, there's a famous example, a few years ago in Florida, actually, where they went through the logic and accuracy tests, and then somebody turned their back and said, we're going to put something in computer and repeat it, and, you know, it didn't catch it. I mean, if you get inside the system, you're inside the system.
But then does it come out again for the final logic and accuracy test?
This particular mechanism, this, you know, this fraud that's set, applies only to large precincts, so there has to be a certain number of votes cast in order to even begin the process. And the logic and accuracy tests don't even come anywhere, anywhere near them. So, the logic and accuracy tests, you know, just don't, aren't relevant in terms of catching this kind of fraud.
They are relevant in terms of assuring you that somebody programmed the computer correctly in the first place.
That it's capable of counting correctly.
But they don't guarantee that it did what it was doing in the logic and accuracy test on election day. The only thing that guarantees, that gives you any solid comfort in believing that the computer did what it was supposed to do on election day, is that hand count audit. That is the only thing that can, that can give me any comfort in knowing that the computer was doing its job properly, is to check the results, to verify the results. And the, the computer officially produces a report that, that tells you by precinct how many votes each candidate got. And therefore, in order to check that report, you would have to count some ballots in some precincts. And there have been lots of discussions among academics about how many precincts you need to count, and statistically, that depends on how close the election was. But generally, you can get some comfort from counting some precincts. A 4 percent audit, such as we do, in an election that is not razor-thin margins, has maybe a 70 or 80 percent chance of confirming the integrity of the election. I consider 70 or 80 percent to be a whole lot better than zero, which is what our current early ballot audit produces, is zero chance of catching fraud.
All right, I'm going to intercede for a minute. In about 10 minutes, Pat has to leave us. We still have Jim on the phone. We've lost Benny, because he's recused himself. So, at 10 o'clock, I'm going to ask for a motion, and we'll see where we go. And I'm going to remind us all that our role is advisory to the Board of Supervisors. So, whatever that motion is, it may or may not call for the Board of Supervisors to consider something. Or it could further underline our standing position that we want this 100 percent audit technology to be looked at seriously, not only in Pima County, but throughout Arizona. So, we have two extremes here. One is a long-term strategy that we all tend to support. The other one is an immediate strategy that may or may not receive support. So, I don't mind continuing to talk for another seven or eight minutes here, but at 10 o'clock, before Pat leaves, I'm going to ask for a motion.
Could I ask a quick point for Ann to comment on the budget?
You have to break it down, so we, what we did is we broke it down by the hundreds, because we were up to 400, and then we broke the hundreds down into the tens, and then we broke it down. So, it's very, it's brain-dead type of situation what you're doing, and you get, they start daydreaming, and you keep everybody going, and there's a lot of walking involved, because you have to separate them all out, the ballots and the bins and stuff like that. So, it is a tedious task. The one thing that I can offer, because I'm not sure what the, what the number count you're looking for in doing an audit, is maybe look at a smaller version. What we did when we got to the office this morning, we took a batch number, you know, turnover in batches like A1. We're able to take our batch turnovers and break it down by precinct. So, we just took quickly the first one, and, but I don't know what your magical number is high enough to, to do what you're looking for. I quickly ran, this one was a, just A1 was 5689, that was our first turnover, and they go as high as, I think, 11,000. It just depends... It just depends on what it is. And the lowest ones are 1,600. And our satellites are very much smaller. So we were able to break it down, but we also had 56 precincts that had less than 10 ballots in there. So I don't know what's your magical number that you would feel comfortable. But we've already turned over 120,000 ballots, okay? So if you were mean to look at a smaller quantity instead of the whole county, we can give you a rundown by precinct, by batch number, what's in there so you can kind of, that's something that is feasible to do for this election or not feasible to do for this election. I think you would not be able to do this until after the canvas and everything, because we're doing provisionals, we're not going to move. And provisionals, you know, we do have the early ballot coming in, you know, ballots that are dropped off. So anyway, that's just something I wanted to bring to the table. I don't know, Mickey, if that's something that would work for you or not, or you just want to do the whole thing.
The purpose of the hand count audit would be to check the final result that the computer put out. And the final result that we currently use for our audits is the report that's published on election night. And it includes all early ballots received and processed before election day and the precinct ballots that were received on election day. And that's the reference point that we would be trying to look for. We could not take a subset of the early ballots because they would not be checkable against that report on election night. That's the problem we have with the batches, is that they are not checkable. The audit that we do of the batches cannot be compared with that official report that's published on election night.
But we wouldn't have to sort the ballots into all 280 bins that, you know, for each, one for each precinct. We would only have to find the ballots that are for the specific precincts.
That's true. If we chose a half a dozen precincts that we wanted to hand count, then it would be possible to just go through all the ballots and pull out the ballots for those half a dozen precincts. And so this report that you're talking about would help us in that respect because it would tell us how many ballots in those precincts that we're interested in were in each batch.
It would be able to tell you, okay, this is the precinct you need to look for in this batch.
Right. So that would be helpful, and it probably would reduce the time required to sort the ballots, because we don't actually have to sort all the ballots as long as we know which precincts we're going to audit.
So this would be for a hand count after the canvas, because the precincts are not chosen according to law until the morning of the hand count?
Actually, the law says that the hand count has to start within hours of the election.
The hand count starts?
The choice is the start.
The choice is the choice of the races, then the choice of the precincts is made on Saturday?
That's right.
I know. That's the correct procedure, and that's the procedure that we set up. The law says the hand count starts within 24 hours of the election. And we decided here in Pima County to officially declare that the hand count had started, and then to select the precincts the morning that we're actually doing the hand count.
And the reason for that was to maintain the integrity of that so that no one could get at those precincts.
Yeah. Our goal was to prevent manipulation of precinct ballots between the start of the thing and the actual physical counting.
What does the regs regulations manual say?
I've got it over there. I don't remember.
I think the Saturday is in the regs manual, so that's something we might want to change next time around.
Right. The key to that is, I think there are two possibilities. Number one is, you know, the, I keep trying to remember, remind everyone that we need these audit batches that are required by law that have to be pulled out and maintained from an integrity standpoint. Let me suggest an extension of what we're talking about. Let's say we take FN 1600, whatever the size turnover batch that we're talking about. And I'll put one caveat in there, but we take that one and we redline that thing and bring it all the way through the process. And then, just like we do with audits before, you know, the audit batches, we could keep that unit and then do a report prior to all of those. And you need the SOBC report, is what you need. So essentially, we could run an SOBC report and then count all those, that sample, whatever we're talking about, and then run another SOBC report and sequester that whole thing just like we do an audit batch. So that's a way to do that, where we would have a bigger sample. The question that I have to pose to the lawyers is, the law says the sample size is for a maximum of 400, if I recall. And we've chosen to break it into smaller samples just because of the same problem. You know, on the hand count audit day, people can't manage 400 ballots while they manage 150 to 200 better. But that would be, so we could run that special report, again, securing it where, but you would not be able to pull a hand count audit batch out of that bigger group.
Do I understand that FN has offered an intermediate procedure that may be of some value to our looking at this on an immediate basis?
You can give me a whole precinct, though. If you want, it's a whole precinct. No, we could give you a whole precinct. Because I think this initial report, the largest precinct, I think it was three, was precinct 141 we have, in this turnover group, we have 184 ballots in there. That's what I said, you know, it goes from one to 184, it just depends, this one, we could pick a larger turnover report, which is 10,000. But it all depends on where these turnovers are right now in the process. Have they already been opened? Have they, you know, what they're at? Or you can tell me right now, pick a new number. We picked up, was it 9,000 ballots this morning? Okay, we can not run a turnover until we finish all 9,000, and this can be your sequestration, if that's what you want. You just need to tell, we can stop and go wherever you want. We can pick a high number, we can pick a low number. But then the Elections Department have it. Or you can pick an already existing batch number that we have already turned over. You know, I could, or, you know, if, or we can run a query on all the batch numbers if you tell me what's the highest range you're looking for. What is that magical number? Maybe you don't have that magical number. Does, you know?
But we needed to go from here forward, because the batches that have already been turned over, and some of the ballots are opened, and some are already in boxes, and that's not, that's-
And John, some of them may have gone to the duplication board, you know, or they opened it up and had a utility bill in there, or had, you know, a sample ballot, you know, there's these oddities that go on, but yet you can track them. What I'm offering is anything that I am capable of doing. It's ultimately your decision what you want to recommend to the Board of Supervisors through Chuck Huckleberry. So I would be looking for something from them, saying this is what they want us to do.
The one limitation I, the caveat that we got put there is that, you know, and I hate that, we always put the attorneys in this position, but the law is the law. That it says the maximum batch size is 400, and that-
The law does not say the maximum batch size. That is not in the law. That's in the Secretary of State's manual. It is not in the law.
All right, but it's interpreted as-
I know. Benny White is always trying to tell us that the Secretary of State's manual is the law, but it's not the law. It's merely an advisory manual telling you how to implement the law.
All right. If my attorney tells me that that's the way they're interpreting it, then that's the limitation. I'm just trying to make you aware of that.
I know. Unfortunately, the county attorney is an idiot, but we have one working on the-
Just one suggestion for the data. Another way it might be to stratify the sample, to get an idea of what the overall ranking would be expected to be from the hand count supposed to all the votes. There's another way you could calculate the results, see if they're consistent. And that might be a relatively easy thing to do.
If, what we have now is a third position, perhaps, that is to say what FN has offered to work with us, and that we would come up with a strategy which we can discuss over the next hour or two if needed. Is that perhaps the motion that we need to consider at this point? Or is that insufficient to satisfy your situation, which, in case we go back to what we were looking at before FN made her response?
I'd like to make a first motion that for the long run, we look very seriously into the, all alternatives for improving the process, including sorting, including scanning of the ballots, whatever alternatives may come up. Does this be a priority for this committee, starting at the December meeting? And that we attempt to find a solution by the next election, by the next general election.
Is there a second to that motion?
Sure, I'll second that motion.
So that's a broad discussion, that's a broad strategy, and it's a long-term strategy, and it's consistent with other things that we attended and spent time on here. So I'll ask for a vote on that. All in favor?
Thank you.
Any opposed? All right. Now, that still doesn't resolve the meeting situation. We have either to do nothing on the part of this commission with respect to an immediate concern, or to strategize in response to what FN has offered, and whether or not we want to look into that as a short-term strategy. I'm asking whether or not. And then with John's advisory, that we have to vet through the legal, the county attorney's position. So I don't know if you want to proceed in that direction, or where do we go?
I'd like more clarification on how we would use our strategy in terms of clarifying the election. Would it be a post-hand count audit, a second verification? Would it be part of the hand count audit? How does, just got some clarification.
All right. I'm going to make a motion for the short term. And I will preface this motion by saying that because we are an advisory body, it is not necessary for us to put all of the details into the motion, because the implementation is beyond our control. So my motion is that we find a way to do a proper hand count audit of early ballots sorted by precinct so that they can be compared with the official SOBC report that is published on election night. I'm leaving out of that motion any details about the timing of that thing. My personal goal would be to do it before the hand count audit, but as John said, if the lawyers tell you you can't do it before the hand count audit, then that's dead in the water. So I leave that out of the motion. My goal is to do this hand count audit by precinct of early ballots.
Point of clarification, the motion should probably read that we recommend to the Board of Supervisors-
Yes. We're recommending to the Board of Supervisors that in this election, a hand count of some precincts of early ballots, some complete precincts as of election night, so that they can be compared with an official report, should be hand count audited. Now, that's the end of the motion, and I will just comment that this could take place before the hand count audit day. It could take place after the hand count audit day. If there are election contests or automatic recounts, that could push back the timing of the thing. We don't have any control over any of that, and we don't have any control over the lawyer's opinions. But my goal is that before the ballots go into the vault, that they be properly hand counted.
That point of clarification with this motion before us is what FN recommended?
I didn't put that in the motion, but yes, I certainly would like to work with FN to see if there's something that she could provide us that would make this job easier.
Well, that was the nature of my question. Is it your position that what she's offered could help us in this?
It is conceivable, but my goal is to do, to hand count a complete precinct's worth of early ballots. And that means, you know, all of the scanning up until election day would be involved. So I wouldn't want to just take some segment of it and set it aside for hand counting or for sorting or anything. I would want to include all of those ballots as potential hand counted ballots.
All right, do I have a second on this motion?
Yeah, I'll second that.
All right, further discussion?
Go ahead. Mickey, you mentioned election night figures.
Those are the figures that we currently use-
Or end of the election figures.
Either one would be, if we didn't get around to doing the hand count until after the election was completely over and we had a final report, then certainly we could include all of those ballots. I'm assuming that doing all the ballots that are in the computer on election night would be sufficient for us to audit. But certainly adding more ballots and a later SOBC report would be acceptable.
I wanted you both.
Yeah, neither one would be sufficient, I think.
I think there's some logistics issues in sequestering or whatever, all the ballots that have been done up to a certain point. Certainly, the earlys that are received at the polls and that come in after, that are not counted, I guess, by Tuesday evening, would need to then be totally, you know, kept in a total, separate grouping.
Yes.
And so when we go back to do this sorting and counting and everything, we would need to make sure that none of those were mixed in.
Would you publish the SOBC? I guess it could be an early, is that what you're saying? It could be not a final one. And as long as we know exactly what ballots have produced that SOBC, then that would be sufficient for a hand count.
Well, if at 8 o'clock, I just say 8 o'clock, Monday night, we have not downloaded any precincts Tuesday night, sorry, we've not downloaded any precincts. So we run the summary report, which is published, and we run SOBC. And just lock that guy up, so, you know, where there's no allegations, that we're going out there and making sure that the numbers match.
Just to go back, would you define the SOBC?
It's a saving of votes cast. It's a detailed, it actually is by race by precinct. And then that could be, that would be sealed up as we seal up all the other interim reports that are done.
Well, that should be published, not sealed up. It has to be published. It has to be in the public.
Well, at that point in time, we're not prohibited from publishing. So it's 150-page reporter that was on the other, on the primary. So it'll be less than the general.
What we have done in the past with regard to the audit is we've gotten that on a computer desk.
Right.
All right, further discussion on the motion?
I'm concerned about the timing here, unless we go to the Board of Supervisors' agenda next week.
We have a timing issue that the Board does not meet until the 13th. The other thing is, I still feel, you know, proper is, and I'm not trying to nitpick you, but proper or some reasonable number, we need to be very specific. I don't want to get where you say proper, and we pick 10, and you say, no, it shouldn't have been 20.
Precincts, you mean?
Precincts, yeah. You know, we need to be very specific in what you're asking.
My ideal would be the same precincts that are used for the precinct hand count audit. audit. That would be my ideal. And clearly, if somebody decides that logistically they don't want to do that, put that much effort into it, and they might reduce that number, we are required by law to audit 1% of the early ballots, which in this case would probably be about two precincts.
Yeah, but we're required to do 2% of precincts, right? So that would be four or five?
That we do four.
We'd probably do 4%--
You're required to do 2%.
Of the precincts, which is eight or nine precincts. I think with our new precincts it's probably eight. And 2% would be four, 1% would be two. And by goal would be to do 4%. The actual implementation is certainly going to be determined by somebody other than me.
Does it go on the agenda the same day as the canvas?
I don't think the canvas is scheduled until the 20th, 21st. So there's, you know, I was concerned about that too, and that's why we looked at that. So we would have some time in there.
But we wouldn't have time to do it before the hand count. We could just do it as a post-hand count.
And well, and based upon Nikki's delineation, and I agree with it, I think it's the right way to do it, we don't pick those precincts until the day of the hand count anyway. So you couldn't do it prior to the hand count. So what that would mean operationally is, those are picked, then we have to go through all of the early ballots counted, which will be probably 200,000 ballots, and pick those precincts out, and then hand, and then hand sort those by precinct.
While keeping them secure.
While keeping them secure. And the problem is, we will have picked, and I don't know how many it will be, but in order to meet the other legal 1% requirement, we will have already picked certain ballots, you know, batches for auditing. So that's the other reason to wait until after the hand count audit is done, because those batches were set aside and sequestered and sealed up and should not be tampered with until that hand count audit is complete. At that point in time, then you potentially could then go in and take the ballots out of those. But, you know, I am very concerned about tampering with the audit, the audit batches. But they're part of that count, so it's--
Does any need to amend the motion? Or if not, I'm going to call for the vote.
Yeah, I didn't specify when it's going to take place in the motion.
Or the number.
Or the number, because I think those are implementation details, and like John said, there's no point in getting into an argument with the lawyers over what is and is not legal. And so if it gets done after the regular hand count audit, then at least it gets done. My goal is to get it done.
So the motion is to recommend to the board of supervisors--
My, my goal is to recommend to the board of supervisors that the same precincts that are hand count audited would be, the early ballots would be hand count audited for those precincts.
After the hand count?
I'm not specifying when it takes place. Whenever, whenever they consider it feasible to do so, is when I would want it to be done.
You have some caveats about the lawyers in your, which in the motion? Whatever the lawyer says on page, whatever.
I'm not putting anything in the motion about the lawyers.
Okay, you got it here, which--
And the, and the timing issue that I also want to point out is, because of these, the potentials for protests and those kinds of things, are you trying to, do you want to say that it needs to be done before the canvas?
Yes, I want it done before the canvas, because my understanding is that the day after the canvas, the ballots are supposed to be sent to the vault. And so therefore, I think it has to be done before the canvas.
All right. Johnny and John, do you have enough notes on this to have a clear picture of the--
No, I--
Okay, sorry. Hold on. Any other last minute questions? If not, I'm going to call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? Jim, did I hear you?
Aye.
All right, thank you. All right. Now, we can talk about this-- Well, thank you, Brad, I'm sorry.
I think this is non-cultural, in some way, to call upon the board supervisors to ask the Secretary of State to take whatever actions are possible to expedite better auditing, including the experiment we proposed, so we just don't wait and wait and wait and have this situation come up again.
We'll reaffirm, we'll reaffirm what we had already done in previous months. There's a second. Any further discussion on that motion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Pat.
Another--
Aye, you're here.
Yes, good.
Would it help you even slightly if we change the number of ballots in--
Thanks, Pat.
Which would make fewer batches but more per batch? Or we, because we change them based on late predictions of how many people will vote early and that sort of thing.
My personal feeling is that all earlys ballot batches should be about 150 or 200 ballots, because I think it's easier, I think it's easier for the people doing the scanning to get through a scan without errors, if you have a smaller batch size. The city of Tucson uses batches that I think are 150 or 200 batches, and I observed their process, and it was much more efficient than the county's process, because the county uses batch sizes of 500 or 600 ballots, and they often will get through 400 or 500 ballots and have some glitch in the system.
You're wrong.
I'm wrong about what--
400 is the limit.
Yeah. And 250 has been the number--
I'm talking about non-audit batches.
Oh, no, no.
Regular, regular early batches run about 500 ballots. And oftentimes, these rickety machines have some glitch that happens somewhere in the middle of scanning 500 ballots, and then they have to back the thing out, start over, and go through that batch again. And I would estimate that 20 or 30% of the batches get re-scanned before they get done.
You're wrong. I've watched it for several elections. There are some machines that are ordinary, but it happens definitely, but it's not common in the current school. And I don't think those size of batches--
When I've been observing elections, I've observed it happening way too much of the time, and it slows everything down. And, and so if I were running the show, I would limit all scan batches to about 200 ballots, because I think that it would provide for a more efficient scanning operation. And, and if we did that, then all of the ballots, the regular scan batches, the audit scan batches, would all be about the same size. And I would think that having them all be the same size would be a good idea.
That's another thing that certainly could be done without any board of supervisors involved.
But that's up to, but that's up to Brad to decide how to, how to do that.
A bearing does that have on, on what we're trying to do here?
It is conceivable, when we go back and talk about the theory of fraud, it is conceivable that the, that the software is looking at batch size and is only committing fraud on large batch sizes.
But we're not, we're not, I mean, that would be kind of a silly way to write a software, because you wouldn't need to do that. You could ignore batches. You don't care about batches. All you care about is bottom line numbers.
Actually, you might care about batches. If, if you know, if you know that the audit batch is going to be smaller than the regular batches, then you could write the software to only commit fraud on large batches.
The fraud would happen post-batch, after the, after all the data is dumped into the database. There'd be no point in manipulating--
Yes, there would be a point, because we audit some of those batches, and they have to match up the ballots, the ballots have to match up with the count for those audit batches.
Well, sure, but why, why mess with batches at all? That's what I'm saying, is why would a fraudulent scheme, fraud scheme mess with batches at all? It wouldn't have to. It wouldn't have to.
There are certainly opportunities to be detected that way.
Yeah, exactly. Just do it on the database. I mean, the database is--
You're absolutely right.
The database is, is complete black box.
You're absolutely right. So the batch size probably is irrelevant to the question of fraud.
Just one other point, because I don't think it was clear before about making a stratified sample, is if we know that certain districts are more likely to be Republican or Democrat by significant margin given past history, it could be useful to take some of those into account when doing these hand counts, to see if the outcomes are consistent with the hand count. That would just be another way of checking.
The analysis, the kind of analysis that we're looking at here and we're doing ourselves actually points you to, you can sort the precincts by most likely to be a problem. And so you could do it that way. But I, and that would be okay with me, but doing them randomly would also be okay with me. So it's--
One of the things that I have done in analyzing election results, I looked at the, for example, the Republican presidential primary, where we audited two batches, which incidentally was only one half of 1%, which was a violation of the law, because we were required to do 1%. But I looked at those two batches. Romney got 37% of the vote in one batch, and he got 40% of the vote in the second batch, and overall, he got 45% of the vote. So those two batches did not, were not representative of the whole election as a whole. Now, certainly statistically, those batches were only 150 ballots apiece, and so you wouldn't necessarily expect them to be representative of the total statistically. There's just not enough ballots there to rely on it. But I thought it was interesting that both of the batches, he had smaller numbers of votes in those batches than he had overall in the election.
My question, then I think the answer to my question is you don't care about the batch size for the hand count?
No, I don't.
Okay.
No, I think Tom's point is a good one, that, that if somebody's doing fraud, they're not caring about batch size.
And I want to understand again that the chance of having introduced an algorithm of some sort that would have resulted in fraudulent manipulation would have had to have been introduced by June of '06, unless someone is indeed corrupt.
Maybe or maybe not. And if, the corrupt person does not need to be in Pima County. Absolutely not. If, if this is being done on a national scale, the corrupt person is almost certainly not in Pima County, and somebody has found a way to commit fraud nationally.
This will get back to our long-term strategy. It's not going to help us right now.
This, just, just in understanding how such software could have gotten in, these guys in California who did their study went back to 2008, and they found these anomalies in the 2008 Republican presidential primary, which was in early 2008. They haven't gone back any further than that to see if they see these anomalies any further back. So one option is, it could have, it could have been in the system since before 2006. But, but my example of the Stuxnet virus, the way that was introduced was through the printer, not through the computer itself. The printer talks to the computer.
We're getting back to the long-term stuff, and I think we've already decided that--
Yeah, I'm just trying to answer Charles's questions about how such a thing could have happened. It could have happened in lots of different ways. Jim pointed out a way that it could have happened, but, but Jim's method would have required somebody in the department to be corrupt. But something like a printer, that wouldn't have required, I mean, somebody probably comes out and services that printer from time to time.
Or the memory card.
And the printer, the printer has a memory card. Well, and, and the memory cards in the precinct scanners, those memory cards talk to the computer at election time, and when they load votes into the computer, it is theoretically possible for a virus into the computer that way. So there's lots of ways that the virus could get into the computer. And it doesn't even, it doesn't even have to be part of the Jim's software, because the Jim's software is application software. In order to accomplish tasks, Jim's talks to the operating system. The operating system does certain functions on behalf of the application software. So if you had a virus that you got into the operating system, you wouldn't have to touch the Jim's software at all.
We understand all this, but yes, yeah, this is going way into what we need to talk about in the next--
Yeah, I was just trying to answer Charles's question.
I understand.
There's so many different ways it could happen that it boggles the mind.
FAN has to leave, and I want to thank her for attending today and also offering the opportunity to, to move this concern forward, so.
Yeah, from what I gather, you want to do a full count, right?
Yeah.
A full precinct? So we need to--
A full precinct. And so we would need, we would need to identify in portions of the early ballots, we would need to identify which portions had the precincts that we might be interested in. And if we had a series of reports, then that would, that would allow us to narrow down our search.
So, number one, we've already got a bunch that have gone through, so they, but the other part of it is, we don't know what precincts we're going to audit until the end. So, so we can't predetermine what batch has what precincts in it. Plus, I don't want that done anyway, because there are precincts that have, you know, Republican leanings, and there are those that have Democrat. The, the reason that we allow the party chairs to choose on Saturday morning what precincts it is, is if they've got some precinct that they are concerned about, or that's, that they think something happened on the other side, or whatever, that's when they make the choice. But we, we can't, we're too far down the pipe to start identifying. This, this turnover batch from the recorder had, you know, 35 votes in this precinct.
Like I said, 204 precinct, 141. You know, the next batch could be--
One.
Yeah.
Your, your computer has all this information in it, right? So after the election, it would be possible to generate these reports. Is that right?
It would be possible before we start adding voters and, you know, deleting voters, because, you know, right now, as we were talking, we're going to have a number change what our batch order is, because we've already had a few people die. And the question is, when they sign that ballot, were they still alive? You know, and the answer is yes. You know, so, you know, so we have, we have this scenario. So the sooner, what we'll do is we'll just stop, you know, removing people from the list. We always continue adding it from it, but it'll be able to pick, the sooner it is that you're able to get it to this. Because remember, we're in the middle of doing provisionals at that particular juncture.
And I'm assuming we won't be concerned with provisionals. That's my assumption.
Yeah. And then, of course, you also have to know that we usually wrap up all the earlys or drop off of the polls on election day by Wednesday. And then, of course, we have the triples. The triples where we're questioning the signature, we usually give them until we're through with the conditional provisional ballots. I'll always weigh on the side of the voter if we can't get a hold of them, because we're still generating the letters saying we have a problem with their, with their signature.
If we're working off the SOVC that's produced on election night, then any ballots processed after that are not going to be part of the hand count audit.
But they will be, the numbers will show up. If we say, okay, you picked precinct 141, we're going to say, tell me what, where in all the batch turnovers we have, what's 141. So they make them afterwards, because we're still looking at it. So I can't do a cutoff. You'll be able to tell by the batch number.
But we'll know by the batch number that we're not interested in.
John, does the elections department keep the batches in the batch numbers we give them? Yeah.
Okay.
But I see no value to, I'm not arguing against it, I just don't see any value in you having to go back and figure out what the distribution was in those batches, because we're going to pick by precinct, and then we got to go through every one of those boxes anyway to find those precincts. So-- The, the one value it could give you is if we have a report and says there's three from this precinct in that turnover, once you found the third one, you can stop looking. That's about the only bag you'll give you in that.
Yeah. And I think that could, that could, that could save us some time.
Yeah, all right. Jim, I, you had a comment? Jim? Are you there?
I sure do. We're talking about possible methods of fraud getting into the machines. Well, I'm going to lay out one real quick. The first thing you do is take the former-- in fact is what our purpose is and does. You use him to identify corruptible election officials, such as a guy who's had his county issued credit card yanked for fraud, and still not fired over it, such as our Brad Nelson. And then you, knowing that Brad Nelson is corruptible, you have him insert the issue into the machine. Now, look, I don't expect you to take issue on this, and I know that this body doesn't want to confront real problems going on in Pima County, but at some point, we need to work to who exactly is running our elections around here. And I know that's not a discussion for a day, but it's a discussion that needs to happen somewhere in some form, and I have to say it.
Jim, we've had that on the agenda for you for five weeks. Five weeks.
Five meetings, yeah.
And you just need to show up, and we'll discuss it.
He's been traveling. Yeah, in fact, we, even at the last meeting, Jim, we debated whether we should pull it from the agenda, and so, you know, the issue is there for you to come forward with any evidence and...
I'll, I'll be back soon. I'm in Boston right this second. I'll be back soon.
Yeah, all right. Any other further discussion that'll be of value today?
Just, just one comment. There is a possibility of looking at the sequence of databases as a way to detect this kind of thing, because somewhere in the process, from when the, from when you start the election to when you end the election, if there's fraud, it has to happen sometime. I mean, it could be continuous. But, so the sequence of databases, I think, is of little added interest.
And that's, that's why we wrote the program that we did that at least looked at the parameters.
Yeah. But I think you have to go beyond that, to look at the, how the data changes day to day. After the fact, how the data changes day to day.
How the data changes day to day.
Oh, for example, when I did the analysis back in 2006, how the counts change day to day, I actually found cases where, where the vote total decreased between two successive databases, which can't, can't happen, okay? And it, and we, you know, we figured out a way, because they had reloaded some data, okay?
It can happen.
So it can happen under those circumstances. But you have to be, you know, I mean, those, those are the kinds of things that trigger analysis. You know, when there's something funny, looks funny, you go analyze it. And I think those databases are a wealthy source of, rich source of data.
And that's, that's why we document, when they've got an anomaly like that, they write written logs, so we can go back and tie, tie back to that. You know, I, you know, I want to go back to Tom's, you asked Tom and I, and number one, I don't have a whole lot to add to what, because I agree with what Tom said, but it's very difficult to figure out how someone in 2006 could have figured out that, you know, Romney was going to be candidate code, you know, 20 in race one, of, you know, and those kinds of things. And so it's, it's very difficult for me to see how you introduce this kind of anomaly along the line. The point that I want to make is, and I would, I would ask that, you know, it's, you're entitled to your opinion, but you continue to say, you know, identify potential fraud on the part of the staff. You also, you know, say that there was a very legitimate or a very deliberate reduction in batch size, and that, that decision was not made by the county, it was made by, as a conjunction with the observers. So when you start laying the word fraud on these things that are decisions that are out of the control of the county, but you put the county's name in it or imply it, I think that's inappropriate. And I just feel, you know, let's be fair, we try, we're trying to cooperate and help here. But I, I would ask, since you're being quoted in the paper, being on, being videoed and everything else, that when you make these assertions, that you take into consideration that we have put in hundreds of thousands of dollars of changes, and, and hundreds of changes in procedures and security and those things to protect those things. And every one of these issues that you've come up with, the memory card that Jim mentioned earlier, you know, we put seals on them. And if, if the machine comes in, Barbara's there, you know, Pat's there, when the machine comes in with a broken seal, we don't, we don't trust it. We don't even put that card in the machine. We recount the ballots. So, I mean, we are very specific. So all I would ask is that you recognize some of that stuff. I, I think your point's very well taken. I'm supportive. We're, we're trying to help. But, but let's not throw the word fraud out in, in terms of the local folks, when there's not any proof and we don't have it figured out yet. If, if we figure it out, then we'll deal with it. But I don't think it's appropriate to do it ahead of time.
I have tried to make it clear in the current discussion that I am not suspicious of anybody in Pima County. I am suspicious of somebody at some national level who has figured out some way to gain access to computers all over the country.
Right.
I don't have any idea specifically how they could have done that. I know we have instituted all security procedures in Pima County that we hope have prevented anybody from gaining access to our computers.
Right.
And yet we see anomalies like this, and we can't explain them. And my argument has always been that because the computer's a black box, we need to verify what it's doing.
And I agree.
Because we can't trust it. And, and there are just too many ways that it can be corrupted, and we don't even know all of those ways. You know, I, I can, I can rattle off a dozen ways, but there's probably 100 more that I haven't even thought of. And there are some very sophisticated people out there who are trying to influence the outcome of elections. And I suspect some of them are a whole lot smarter than I am. And so they're probably doing things that wouldn't even occur to me. But I just don't know what they are, and therefore, my protection is this hand count audit. Because I figure that a hand count audit gives me some confidence that whatever else happened, the, the count of the votes is correct. Obviously, if, if somebody were creating fraudulent ballots and stuffing them in the box somehow, I'm not going to catch it with this hand count audit.
But we would catch it with other internal procedures.
I hope so. I hope so. It's, it's not, as Artie said, nothing is absolute proof of anything. We just do the best we can, and the best I can do is to advocate for a proper hand count audit. And, and if we get the proper hand count audit, then I'll focus my efforts on some other kind of fraud.
And, you know, we, we have taken the input from you, as well as a number of others, things that I've come up with and everything else. And, and if we can identify the ways, more ways for this to have occurred, and we can put a block on it, we're going to do that, okay?
And I appreciate that.
But the, the other thing that, that we want to do is that we need to convince the legislature, you know, a lot of the, the stuff that's going on in all these lawsuits is, is tied to the fact that the law is set up a certain way, and we're living, you know, we have to live within that law. And, you know, the fact that they say it's only 1 percent, get them to change it to 5 percent. But that's, you know, that's not something that the county board supervisors, Brad Nelson, F. Ann Rodriguez, any of us have any control over.
My feeling is, my feeling is that today, Pima County's elections are processed in a very good manner.
Right.
I am confident of what people in Pima County are doing in processing the election. I don't see any, I don't see any major things that I would want them to change. I agree that the major things are in the law. And, and I have tried over the years to make changes in the law, and Tom and I put together an omnibus bill, and we gave it to Jonathan Payton, and he trash canned it.
And he did the same thing, and they trash canned his too.
So, so, you know, I, I know that getting the law changed is really difficult.
But that's the key to making us be able to expand what we do.
There are cost implications to all this, too.
Huge.
Everybody complains about taxes, but nobody does anything about it.
That's right. And this is, I mean, sorting all these balances is going to be time consuming and...
Well, for what it's worth, we're moving towards all mail ballot elections, and the people in Oregon and the people in King County, Washington, told me that their Pitney Bow sorters allowed them to be more efficient in the processing of those mail ballots, and they saved money by buying sorters. I think that that's good advice. I think that we, we could probably save money in the processing of our mail-in ballots if we had a sorter in the recorder's office.
We all agree with that.
And that doesn't, that doesn't require legislation to do something like that. So there's lots of things that could be improved, and, you know, if I were the czar, I suppose I would try to improve them. Those are all long-term things. They're not things that we can fix today. Maybe after the top two primary proposition wins, everything will get thrown up in the air and, who knows?
We'll get a new man.
It's the opportunity. You've got to rewrite the whole thing anyway.
That's right. Sometimes I think we in Pima County are a voice in the center of wilderness.
I think we are.
And other times, I think we are for a beacon on the hill, as far as what ought to be done in Arizona.
We have 20 percent of the votes of Arizona here in this county, and, and Maricopa has...
Fifty-six.
Fifty, 50 percent or something?
Fifty-six.
You know, so really, if fraud is going on in Arizona, the place that, that if I were the fraudster, I would be doing the fraud in Maricopa County. I might not even bother with Pima County. I don't know. So, you know, we try to do things better in Pima County, and I hope that somebody in Maricopa County is paying attention and is, you know, learning from our example.
Along those lines, I'm, I'm pleased that a reporter is here with us, Charlie, today, because, and you've already published two articles on related issues, and, you know, to get the public aware of these issues is important, and it hasn't really happened a lot. And so, thanks for your interest.
Can I add one other thing that Mickey reminded me of, and I'll be quiet, I'm sorry? But, but one of the things that, that also intrigued me in this report was, if you look at the jurisdictions that were cited, Maricopa County runs a totally different election system than Pima County.
Right.
Yet the same kind of anomalies show up. And, and so, you know, there, that, that, well, number one, that's a point I want to make. Number two, I think that there are other factors that we're missing that we need to get into the evaluation, whether it's socio-economic, whatever they are. But I think that, you know, they vet this software. I'm agree, I agree with you, Jim, Tom, all of us agree that we need to vet this software even more and double-check it. That's fine. But when, when the same anomalies show up across three totally different election systems, written by three totally different companies, and...
Well, I wouldn't go that far.
Well, actually, this is by a long time back, though.
These companies are known to work together.
Well, that's, okay.
So we don't know what they're doing when they work together.
The point is, it's across three different samplings, that you see the same similarity.
Yeah. Well, and it's elsewhere in the nation, and that's the point I wanted to make, is that those of you who are, and those of us who are following this beyond the Arizona boundaries, I urge you to continue to, to look at that, so that we might learn something from what's happening in, in other states.
Yeah, particularly, Larry could do a verification of the date your own he has. That'd be tremendous.
And the troubling things that are happening all over Pima County necessarily have to do with the computer. They have to do with who can vote. They have to do when you can vote, how you can register, and these are...
And voter intimidation, which is quite current right now. So I don't see that in Arizona.
And false information going out about things.
Yeah. I think Arizona would be pleased with the fact that we don't see that.
Well, we do know that Nathan Sproul lives in Phoenix.
Yes, we do know, and we do know that the election, for those who vote in Spanish, is on the 8th of November.
So, it, it might be that it's taking place under our noses, and we don't know it, but...
My point is, they're using far less sophisticated tactics. They're just, you know, telling people we're on date, they're putting up billboards, they're telling people they're not registered. This is far less sophisticated than takes a computer.
Yes, yes, it is. All right, let me make a call to the audience. Yes?
Thank you. First off is that I was on a phone call around 2005, and I don't know if you were on that phone call or not, it was with Ted Downing, and I think it was Abby Rubin or Dave Delft who said about the memory cards, that the memory card could be planted with a virus, okay? And it could be in there. And somebody, he said, he called it the, he shocked everybody because he called it the Mickey Mouse virus. In order to launch the virus, if somebody got access to a voting machine with, had that memory card in it, he could walk up there and type in a code, and he made it like Mickey Mouse, 123, or whatever. And it would launch the virus, because it's maybe already built into the software. You know, there's so much you can do. You know, it's very, very important that we do have verification. Secondly, this is going to be one heck of an election, okay? I think all of you are reading books, the same books that I'm looking at, but you're reading a lot more than I am, okay? It doesn't look good. It really doesn't. And this, the far right and the far left, we're coming together, and we're starting to realize that we need to wake up as Americans and take one really solid debate. Does our vote count or not? We want to trust, but we want verification. We have reasons not to trust from Pima County. We have data, we got the databases, we know what happened in the 2000 election, we know what happened in the 2006, we know about the memory cards being reloaded, okay? You know, we know about that every time that Pima County starts counting ballots early, and this is a fact I'm going to give you, that they were printing election summary reports, saying who was going to win or lose. Now, seriously, would anybody like to know eight days out who's going to win the football games on any Sunday, eight days before? There's a way of getting it out. Now, they're not going to go ahead and, you know, now that they know that we know how to read an audit log, and we're going to get the database, and the Windows event logs, they know how we can search that up, they're going to find a way to go ahead and get in the computer, and you know, they might be able to go ahead, put a camera on, okay, everybody watched the thing for, you know, 24 hours, and you see nobody's gotten to it. Well, we've seen that movie, as Bill would say. That's when they go ahead, put another videotape up, okay? And then somebody's in there, and they can do things. The point is, we need verification. We are not going to stop, okay? We want to know that our vote, and you people are experts, and you know, Barbara, we've been going over this issue, you and me, for six or seven years. I'm really surprised that it's only been a year now that you've known about all this. Okay, that's what you said, I got it on tape. I'm very disappointed.
No, no, I said I've only been on the...
With how difficult that, I was speaking, please, I got it, Barbara.
You're wrong. I said that I've only been on the commission.
Okay, well, good. But you know the issues. You disputed him. It's contrarian game you're playing, I don't understand. We're hurt by it, because we're good friends. Leave it at that, I still want to be your friend if I said those statements, because it's honesty. But we have a responsibility, you all, is to go ahead and make strong recommendations, because, you know, it is our democracy, and there is problems in this election. Artie, you think we're going to have problems this election nationally? Do you think there's going to be problems nationally? My God, I'm listening to right-wing radio shows that are telling people that if Obama was to win, you know, make sure you have a three-day supply of food and stuff in the house, and they're giving away prizes of survival kits. I mean, this is insanity. It really is. We need elections that are verifiable. He talks about this. I can't believe what John says. Well, the law says that you can only do this. Well, gee, we're already breaking the law, because we're counting 4 percent of the precinct vote. The law is a minimum. It says that you can, you have to do this minimally. The board of supervisors has a strong role in this election, not Chalko Berry. The fact is, on that situation, is that the board of supervisors is supposed to do the canvas, and when three of them decide, I'm not signing the canvas until I know it's 100 percent accountable, guess what? If they say you're going to sort those ballots, they're going to be sorting them. Now, we have to have three supervisors that are going to do that. Other than that, I thank you all for your great service. I think you've done, you know, you go into really good debate. I just ask you to remember the seven Cs, and the last of the seven Cs is courage. Courage to stand up for this country and our vote, because we know that there are problems. And I say that from knowing from all the years I put in this thing. And even having a heart attack and suffering through that, and having to quit smoking was pretty hard, too. We got a problem, Houston. Give us verification. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments? If not, I'll ask for motion to adjourn.
Okay.
was pretty hard, too. We got a problem, Houston. Give us verification. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments? If not, I'll ask for motion due, Jim.
Second.
Go in favor. Jim, thank you, and others, we'll see you again in December, right? We have a day...